I am happy to introduce that tonight we have Weebalows PAC 89 to join us. And they're going to lead us in the pledge.
Please follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I would just ask one second if all the scouts could just stand in front of the Board of Selectmen for a PAC 89 picture, I think that would be really cool. Everybody run right over there, stand up in front. Any parents that actually have a cell phone, take a picture of the Weebalows six.
Great. Thanks, guys.
Before you guys go, so what are you guys working on? What are you, why, so why are you here? Why don't you tell everybody why you're here tonight? You don't know why you're here? Who's the spokesman of the group? It's for a badge. What badge is it?
Citizenship? Yes.
Citizenship? And what did you do while you were here?
Pledge of Allegiance.
Before you did the Pledge of Allegiance? You met with Selectmen Chairman Keen? Oh, okay. And what did she tell you about?
She was answering my questions about something.
Oh, very good. So I hope you learned something. All right, well, thank you for coming in.
Thanks, guys.
Hope you guys come back sometime.
Thank you for having us.
Good job.
Yes, nice job, Alex.
Well, that was our whole audience.
Was it Weebalows and not Weebalows?
That clears the room.
Did I say it wrong?
Yeah, it's PAC.
Thanks, guys. Thanks for bringing in Aiden. Thanks for everything you guys do to help him. I know, you just cleared the room.
Thanks.
All those kids are volunteering on campaigns, right?
I know. Literally, everything I told them, they were like, oh, yeah, I'm doing that. Oh, yeah, I'm doing that. I was like, oh, I know you guys know. Okay, first item on our agenda, oh, public comment. I guess I know no one's here for public comments, so, yeah. We'll move on to approval of minutes. We have the October 22nd and October 25th open session minutes in our packets.
Move, the Board of Selectmen approve the open session minutes of October 22nd, 2018, and October 25th, 2018, as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then we have the minutes from our February 12th, March 26th, and October 9th executive session. If you guys had a chance to review those.
I'll make a motion and move that the Board of Selectmen approve the executive session minutes of February 12th, 2018, March 26th, 2018, and October 9th, 2018, as presented.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, we have a donation of a bedroom set from David Donmond to Stevens Estate.
Sounds like it's coming home to where it belongs.
Yeah, there's some nice photographs of some nice old furniture.
Madam Chair, the Director of Stevens Estate has taken a look at the furniture and determined that it's appropriate to be placed and used at the estate.
It was originally built for the estate, right? So that's even better.
Yeah, that's very cool.
Madam Chair. Go ahead.
Motion to accept the donation.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to move into licensing?
Will we move into licensing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, we just have a couple items tonight. Our first is a one-day liquor license request from Christie Hale for the North Andover Foundation for Education. I don't see Christie here. They're having a fundraising event on the 17th at the Brook School, and we're just being asked to waive the fee, as we've done in the past in our packet. We have the full favorable recommendations from the police, fire, and building inspector.
All in favor?
Second? Anyone?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Our second item is a request for the Stevens Coolidge Place for a one-day wine and malt license for indoor cocktail party on November 16th from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Again, we have all this in our packet with all the required sign-offs. Is there any discussion?
And this is an indoor one, right?
It's indoor one, right, right.
Mr. Manjre, for, I think at this point it was three meetings ago, maybe four meetings ago, we had a resident come and ask about the parking. Has there, I haven't heard any complaints about the parking situation over there.
No, we have been placing where that residence address was. We have been placing cones and parking restrictions on one side of the street. It's the street that abuts alongside of Stevens Coolidge.
That extension of Wood Lane almost.
Exactly, yeah. We've done that. I know we did it for last event. I can double-check with traffic to make sure that we're doing it again. But we certainly listened to the resident and put those restrictions up without, we haven't got any response. So my guess is that they continue to be placed in that location when there are events.
Mr. Chairman, motion approval.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. And our last is a request for two one-day liquor license applications from Paul Galant on behalf of Merrimack College for events to be held on November 15th and December 28th. Again, we have all the sign-offs in our packet as required. And again, I would just note, Town Council is having an ongoing discussion with Merrimack. We hope to have a more full presentation of that before the end of the year. I'll hear a motion.
I'll move approval of the request of Merrimack College for two one-day wine and malt licenses for receptions at Cassia Hall on November 15th, 2018, from 6:00 to 30:00 PM, and December 28th, 2018, from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. Second.
All in favor? Aye.
I think what you'd expect from that report is that there will likely be several full licenses given to Merrimack as a way to offset all of the one-day licenses. So Town Council, Egan, is working on that.
Great, great. I appreciate the effort on that. With nothing else, I'll hear a motion to.
Motion to move out of licensing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Licensing.
Okay, now we're back into consent items. The first item is the acceptance of a grant from Massachusetts Department of Children and Family Services in the amount of $25,000 for a youth mentoring program. We have information in our packet. This is something the Youth Center have seen actually already out on social media of them advertising this and asking for high school students to apply to be mentors. We're, we'll be, they'll be connecting high school students with middle school students for a mentoring-type relationship. Looks like a great program. I don't see Rick Gorman here, so I guess, if any questions, we can go back to him, but...
So was this an application that came out of the Youth Center, the Youth Center office?
Yes. Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept the donation for $25,000 from the Mass Department of Children and Family Services for a youth mentoring and recreation program.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And again, thanks to Rick Gorman and his staff for filling out this application and pursuing this award and getting it. It's awesome.
Yeah.
Nice amount of money to do that.
I don't know if it matters in the acceptance, but it was a grant, not a donation. I think there's what?
Oh, did I say donation?
Did I say grant?
I might have said donation, because I actually was thinking, why wasn't this in donation section when I said it? Apologies, yes, a grant. Thank you. I, as I was saying the words, I was like, that sounds wrong. I couldn't think of why. Okay. All right, so do we have to redo that, or you got that correct? So the next item is a request of Mr. Mealy, Assistant Superintendent, for 15 miles an hour speed limit on Cypress Terrace. See, he's here, so let him say a word.
So this is the, what you would know as the driveway up to Franklin. We had this concern brought to us by a resident whose child walks to school. We went over. If you've been over there, we've actually installed some cones to define a walking area. But also with the help of the Police Department using their technology, we did monitor vehicles traveling on that driveway slash road. And the speeds are over 20 miles per hour, so we thought it made sense, short of putting in speed bumps, which is what we have at Sargent. We have a 15 mile per hour speed limit at the high school, so we thought it made sense to get people realizing they're coming off of a road onto a driveway, coming up to a school by posting the 15 mile per hour signs. So that's what we're requesting.
So we've certainly, both, Mr. Mealy has taken the lead on this. We've been in communicate, communication with the resident on a frequent basis. It should be known that towns have default speed limits of 35 miles an hour. Under new statute, they could be lowered to 30. And therefore, if you're altering the speed limit outside of that 35, either up or down, then you need approval by the Board of Selectmen, and then we pass that along to the Commonwealth to make sure that they have. Sometimes they'll require traffic studies. I don't think so, given the approximate nature of the school in this case, there'll be any issue that way. So in order to set the speed limit lower than the town-wide standard of 35, we need action by the Board of Selectmen. We certainly, I know the Police Department and my office as well support this request.
As, you know, a parent who's had a child at Franklin. Absolutely. I think parents who drive there kind of recognize that, but a lot of people go in and out, so I'm really appreciative of you doing this, because it's, I think everybody breathes a little easier. That's good.
I'm actually surprised it wasn't already.
Yeah, me too.
So I think it's very important that we get that done and get that formalized. Now, we'll put a sign up. Is it be any kind of like a lit sign, a flashing sign that they have?
Not at this point. It'll just be a 15 mile low speed limit sign.
Correct. I couldn't say that we have the support of the PAC 89 Weebalows as well.
Yeah, I heard that.
Speak around.
So will we have any, like, not, I don't want to say the word enforcement, but some information going on? I mean, so people, obviously, you put up a speed limit, people are used to doing a certain speed on that. They may miss the sign. Are we going to have any kind of, you know, sharing, information sharing, or police on site or something to let them?
We'll do a message to the community, Franklin community, that it's going in, just to make them aware of it. Yes?
And our traffic officers typically will do, you know, spot enforcement or spot visibility, which have done in this location.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Especially around the crosswalk. They did some visibility around the crosswalk at the bottom of the street. So I think you would normally expect if we put in some kind of enforcement, they'll do an initial visibility to make sure folks are complying.
Was there a reason why you guys didn't think, I know you thought about it, but was there a reason that you didn't want to install speed bumps like they do have it started? Because I feel like it's self-explanatory. I'm surprised that cars are speeding, because that's the only real reason to be on that road is to drive to the school.
Right, yeah, the, we thought it would be a kind of least restrictive.
Like a hint, like?
Well, let's try this, and then if that's not working, then we can go to the more advanced kind of methods.
Isn't the Sargent entrance to more of a driveway? This is a defined public way.
Correct.
So there is a difference between a defined public way and what is really a driveway? So this is a public street with a Sargent entrance is?
Same as the high school, right? Where we could just post those. This one is an actual road, even though it serves as a driveway for the school.
Okay. Madam Chair, motion approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Good job.
The next item is an affordable housing unit on 2010 Chicaring Road, Unit 107D, Kittredge Crossing.
So as the Board knows, we receive these right of first refusal on all affordable units in town, and it has been the practice of the Board, which we continue to support the Board in this regard, that we do not recommend you exercise your right of first refusal. We'll let that go back to the inventory and proceed from there.
Madam Chair, I move that the Board of Selectmen waived the right of first refusal for 210 Chicaring Road, Unit 107D, Kittredge Crossing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have two appointments.
Yeah, well, it's, we continue the appointment process. We find a few openings here and there, and again, Selectmen Valencourt and I interviewed two really great folks. One will be joining our Festival Committee, the other, our Sustainability Committee. And like a lot of folks we've talked to recently, they really come with experience, professional experience and background, and I'm just really appreciative of these folks stepping up, so...
Yeah, in this case, Seema is a teacher in Lawrence, and she's instituted some recycling programs over there, and she's excited to bring some of that to North Andover, so that's really exciting. And then Lauren is a young resident of North Andover with one young child, and really excited to become part of the Festival Committee and get involved in that way. So again, I think, as Chris said, we get some great volunteers coming through, and as we've always said, you know, the volunteers are really what makes this town a great place to live, work, play, and learn. So these people have really stepped up, as many of them, as all of our volunteers have, and, you know, we thank them all for that.
So I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Seema Senjev Kupte to the Sustainability Committee for the term ending June 30th, 2020, and Laura Yunus to the Festival Committee for a term ending June 30th, 2019.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is the submission of written comments to the Federal Communications Commission regarding proposed rules on cable franchise fees. We received a write-up in our email. I see Mr. Frazier in the audience, so he can join us and give us a couple of words on this.
Hi, Dave.
Hi.
Do I have to announce myself? Brian Frazier, Executive Director of North Andover CAM, local TV station here in town. So over the years, we've seen, and I don't want to make your meeting longer than it has to be.
Don't worry about it, Brian. I think we've got some time tonight.
Over the years, we've always faced legislative issues at the state level. Cable companies will lobby in at the Capitol to try and get away from some of the negotiating at the municipal level. Throughout the country, Massachusetts is a little bit unique. There's a cable access station in just about every town. That's rare throughout the country. There might be, you know, five or six that are like that throughout the rest of the nation. So whenever Verizon or Comcast has gone to the State House and proposed legislation, we've all rallied, we've all gone down to the State House, and we've been able to, you know, kind of, you know, hinder the efforts of whatnot. We get a lot of support from the legislators, representatives, senators. They, a lot of them use the stations like you guys do, you know, during campaign season and stuff like that, or even just getting general information out. So now we're at a point where they're, the cable companies are bringing it to the FCC to try and get away from local franchising at the municipal level. So what we have here is, what's deemed by my industry is kind of an all-out attack on community television. And its proposed rulemakings, they will kind of change the whole flavor of the Cable Act of 1984. What it, the bare nuts of it is, what they're trying to do is allow the cable companies to monetize their in-kind contributions that are part of the package. So just a quick recap, so we get, the community television gets their revenue from a cap of 5% of the gross annual revenue of the cable companies that are servicing the towns. So here in North Andover, we've negotiated recently to have 4% of that revenue as part of the agreement, the franchise agreements for the providers. So, you know, our stations run solely on that. This, you know, minimal fundraising, whether it's membership fees or workshop fees, you know, some nominal revenue that comes there, but predominant funding that drives these stations is through those peg franchise fees. So with monetizing the in-kind donations, there, the language is put forth so that those in-kind donations will be subtracted from that 5% cap. So, or actually, the awarded grant that's here, so it's 4% here. So those in-kind donations, whether it's the cable drops here in town, which is pennies on the dollar, it's not a big deal. But if they start to monetize the channels for which our stations go out on, that could be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. We don't have that information yet. We have a lot of groups that are trying to figure out that. But it's based on a fair market value is how they're trying to put it forward. So, you know, depending on the saturation, the subscriber base, and the Nielsen ratings and all that stuff, the fair market value of that could be more or less in each community. But, you know.
Brian, so what they're trying to do is sell North Andover CAM now to their subscribers or charge for North Andover CAM as a service to this?
No, so along with the, so the Cable Act puts forth this 5% cap that you, the local authorities can take advantage of. So basically, for the right, they deliver their product on the right-of-way. So this Cable Act of 1984 was kind of based on that, was how do you return that, that right-of-way usage back to the community? So that's how our industry got developed. So things like, whether it's the senior citizen discount, that goes along with, like, in-kind donations. So whatever revenue they're losing there, they could take away from that revenue stream for the community access channels. So it's a deduction model of, so that they're not donating in-kind to any community more than that 5% cap. And if it goes in, you know, if it happens, what, in kind of the worst-case scenario, if a municipality has, you know, a low subscriber rate or market share in the town, but the minimum value of, you know, these three channels is $100,000, and that 5% doesn't even equal $100,000, then to have those channels in play, the municipality would actually have to pay the cable company to keep them running if they're allowed to monetize this service.
Jump in for a second. Yep. The, so as part of the process, it's really been bifurcated. They require, they provide the infrastructure, meaning both literal infrastructure, cables in the ground, cables on the poles, and the infrastructure that says you have space on your channel lineup, so many channels, gov, school, general. And separate from that, you're allowed to negotiate a license agreement, which this Board has to approve, you know, it takes us a couple of years to do that, where there can be a fee typically passed through to the customer, which in turn includes capital funding as well, which funds for us primarily, almost exclusively, North Andover CAM. Great program, and something that the community really wants. If, at some point, if they're able to use what's being referred to as in-kind, that infrastructure they placed in, the cost of having a channel on the network, they could offset those costs directly impacting those dollars which go to a place like CAM. In essence, they want to be able to count toward the 5%, our case, 4%. They want to be able to count toward that total. Things have already invested in that, under the 1984 Act, they promised would be separate. They want those to now be included in the formula of the calculation. Direct or zell, however you slice it, would be less funding for North Andover CAM, bottom line. And from our perspective, that's not acceptable. And so what we're asking for, I know Brian supports that and saw that from Town Council, is we want to be able to communicate to the federal government that this is an unacceptable option, that we rely on it, that we can't ask these kind of people, this isn't, you know, ABC, NBC, whatever it is, they rely on this revenue source to operate their equipment and provide broadcasting and programming. And if dollars come away from that, it's one more opportunity for our residents to get information about the community in a way that's reasonably cost-effective. And quite frankly, these folks shouldn't be competing with regional or national, you know, video media. So this is the point of this. I would also say that the Mass Municipal Association has come up and indicated they're not in support of any change as relates to this. There's a lot of momentum around that, and so I'd also ask you individually to communicate with the legislative delegations and say this is something.
You said they're not in support of any change, but they're opposed.
They're opposed to this change.
As far as I know, they submitted comments to it.
They have, yes.
Yep.
This is at full retail cost also, so on top of it all. So in no way does it really relate to providing community services. Really is bold play to offset their expenses, really is what it is.
And there's many fears that it could rewrite the contracts as they exist, just because of the rulemaking underlying it, so that's not fair to the communities themselves.
I think the result is that, it's crystal clear, I think change at the FCC level will result in us receiving fewer services and harming this program. I mean, I think that that's.
Exactly.
I mean, we don't want that to happen. I think that that's crystal clear. It's a successful program. I think it's successful in a lot of other communities. I know Madam Chair Suzanne Egan, our Town Council, had presented a letter, a draft letter to us, with the appropriate step be to add, I mean, I had one general suggestion, but not, just to make sure that our federal delegation, our two U.S. Senators and our Congressmen also receive this letter and make it clear that.
Right, if there's any support, we get for the Selectmen to motivate them to, so that'd be great.
I don't know what type of role they play in that, that process, but certainly at the federal level, I mean, I would hate to see this program be compromised.
So the downside to it is Massachusetts totally on board, and Mark, he was the one that sent the first letter. So we're not really adding a lot of senators to the equation, because Massachusetts is on board. So the rhetoric's changed a little bit where it was, can we get the town as a cohesive unit to send a letter? I got in opposition. I had a couple of conference calls Thursday and Friday, and it's changed now. So they're actually looking for as much comment as possible. So individuals, you know, the community members that are involved with us, maybe the schools, maybe, you know, individually, if we can get people to, you know, get things on record, because the commission is very aggressive, and they've, it's clear to our lobbyists that, lobbyist is the right word, but that it's probably going to pass. You know, Massachusetts and the five other states that are like us aren't enough to move the FCC, you know, for 50 states. So it's laying the groundwork.
Frank, I have a question. We really benefit from the program.
Yep.
But are there states that don't benefit? Or they just don't benefit as much?
So a lot of them are, the franchise agreements are negotiated at the Capitol level, and then it never really gets past the Capitol. It doesn't get out into the municipalities. So it's a state-level funded agreement at that point, and the majority of the states are like that. And California was like us, but then it dwindled away, the regulations changed or the agreements changed.
So the money stays in the state?
Say it again.
The money stays at the state level as opposed to trickling down?
Right, right. They might have a real great facility at the Capitol, and then there's nothing populated out through the, you know, every state's different. Every state is very different. So what we're doing here is laying the groundwork for the legal action afterwards. That's where we are, and that's why that's changed, where let's try and get as many comments on record from Massachusetts, from all over the country. But this is a federal issue, obviously not, not just for here. And it's a big deal. There's no real way to monetize anything yet until we see what they're, you know, including an in-kind or knowing what the, even the signal strength, you know, maybe there's tiers of levels of, you know, we're always fighting, oh, our channel doesn't look as good as ESPN or whatnot, but, you know, so there might be one monetary value for said signal strength, and then, well, if you want the premium look, you know, then they, so we don't know. It's, the sky's the limit, but, you know, early word out is like, the best-case scenario is, if it passes, is we'll see a reduction of 30% in the best of cases, but there's no real way to figure it out until we see it. So it's a big deal. And, you know, we face this stuff going to the state level many times. This is probably the scariest language I've seen in the 10 years I've been involved with running this, running this organization. So I don't think any of us want to see it go away or change specifically for us. We've been saving for 10 years for a shiny new facility that we're under construction on, and we're investing over half a million dollars in a state-of-the-art facility for the town. So it's a big deal. And, you know, we faced this stuff going to the state level many times. This is probably the scariest language I've seen in the 10 years I've been involved with, with running this, running this organization. So I don't think any of us want to see it go away or change specifically for us. We've been saving for 10 years for a shiny new facility that we're under construction on, and we're investing over a half a million dollars in a state-of-the-art facility for the town. You know, it'd be a shame if it gets undercut by all of this, so, and that's complicated, that has its own level of complications, is getting this building up and running. So trying to get my, my board fully on board with getting this word out, this is about the most important thing we've dealt with at this point.
Yeah, I think, can you, as an action item, get us some standard, I don't know, language we can use to communicate out, I mean, that, I understand what we're talking about now, but.
We do, we have templates.
To communicate that to people, to get them to voice their support, just to the point of trying to get as many people to say that they want, you know, to protect this as possible.
Absolutely.
You know, we can certainly help with that, but I want to make sure we're saying the right thing in a nice concise.
Fantastic.
Market-based message.
And Andrew and Suzanne have been great, they've been working with us with the, with the local letters, so, but we'll get those, and I have fact sheets and all that stuff that I can get out to you guys, too.
Madam Chair.
I would just add, it might be helpful at some point, maybe if representatives of the chair from the committee came in, too.
Sure.
To kind of bring us up to speed, because there, beyond this, we do have the new facility, we haven't really talked to this committee a lot. It would be, maybe might be a good opportunity to kind of pull that all together in the near future.
That'd be great.
Madam Chair, I would that the Board of Selectmen approve and sign the comments to be submitted to the FCC regarding implementation of Section 62, 621A, one of the Cable Communications Policy Act of 1984, and that a copy of that correspondence be sent to our federal delegation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Much appreciate all your work. You guys are ever so supportive of us, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, next we have an update on the gas restoration.
Great, can we talk briefly about the aggregation first while we reconnect the system? So you may remember from 2000, how do we, you may remember from 2016, that town meeting adopted the municipal aggregation back in 2016, a town meeting, and we started a process which took close to a year to go through the DPU and ultimately be able to proceed with getting prices to aggregate the electric supply service in the community. And the goal from this was, again, we're getting a lot of residents who were called individually by different supply companies, private supply companies, a lot of seniors especially didn't quite know how to proceed with dealing with those, should they enter those agreements, do the agreements make, make sense? And it really was with that as a backdrop that we decided to move forward and aggregate the electricity load in the community for the purpose of trying to provide a solution to residents. So we got all the approvals back in 2017, have twice, twice gone out to bid and just found that the market wasn't advantageous enough to make a switch. If you recall, you have two sides of your end-grid electricity bill, the front side wouldn't change at all, the backside, one of the four components, the one that is specific to supply would change, resident has to do nothing, they're automatically included, they would have to proactively opt out. This time through, we got much more favorable rates, it means a reduced electric supply rate for residents beginning, they'll get notified in their January bill, it'll affect the February bill, because that really looks back one month, it would affect the six-month period from February through the July bill, and then it'll automatically default back to the end-grid basic service rate, if that's a better rate. So if it's a better rate, so we only hook up for six months at this point, because that's where the rates were most favorable. If for some reason that the basic service rate of the, of end-grid is better after six months, then we would in turn proceed with defaulting back to the end-grid rate. If we go back out to bid in six months, and it's more favorable to the residents to pick up a private supply, again, we'd do that. So residents will begin, we've started to communicate that out through additional channels, residents, we're preparing a package of information that would be provided to the residents, explaining exactly what's going on, questions like, well, I already have a private supplier, does this affect me? Doesn't affect you at all. But every resident that does not already have a private supply will automatically be placed into this lower rate, and they would have to opt out. Very few people would opt out, because opting out basically means, I want my bill to look the same, and I want the telephone numbers I call to be the same, but I want to pay more for electricity, which is highly unlikely. Because of the favorable rates, one of the options residents will have, in addition to being automatically placed into the lower rate, is they can buy an all-green rate, which is still lower than the basic service rate. So if they have some interest to deal with energy from a green perspective, then they could choose to move into that all-green rate, it happens to be a national wind rate, it's still lower than the current basic service rate, and some people have an interest to do that. But they would, it's an action step they would need to take. So there'll be more to that in the next month or so, and again, residents should first see a notice within their January bill, and then they should see a benefit beginning, a reduction in electricity costs beginning in their February bill. So they will have one bump-up month, the winter rate went up dramatically north of 25%, the end-grid winter rate, so they'll see one month where they see that higher rate, and then we'll kick in the lower rate. Questions about that?
So they'll be automatically enrolled if national grid is currently their supplier?
If you're in the national grid basic service rate, yes, you'll automatically go in, which is probably 95% of the people, if not more. If you have a private supplier already, nothing will change. It won't take you out of the private.
But what if you have a private supplier, but you'd rather do this?
Yeah, I think you'd have to opt in, the question, it really depends upon what that circumstance is. Often we're finding when people win private supply, they may be in a one, two, or three year contract, and if they're in one of those contracts, they'd have to look at their particular contract with their private supplier. My guess is more often than not that that would not be advantageous to them, because they'd probably have to pay some kind of exit fee to do that. Yep. Other questions about that?
Just thinking of any information that appears important, as you know.
Yes.
There'll be a lot of questions around what's going on, you know, getting these calls, is it a scam? Is it this?
I know, the calls are unbelievable. They just connect.
Well, there's, there's attentiveness to utilities now as you've never had before.
Right.
And so I think whatever our communication is, it just, again, reassuring people of the integrity, to your point, but also just sort of where they can get their, you know, the FAQs, kind of those questions that are keep going to come up, because I can also see some people sort of, given the time of year, this is coming through, it's going to be during the holidays, a lot of folks may not have full attention, I don't, all of a sudden come January, February, they go, oops. So maybe think about sort of a reinforcement.
Sure.
At some point, or at least letting people know as a follow-up, by the way, this happened.
Absolutely. And I would expect what will happen, too, is when the first bill comes in that's under the basic service rate for end-grid, which is higher, we'll get all kinds of calls believing that what we entered into caused the rate spike, when in fact it's not us, but just what's happening out there in terms of the market. Sorry, my computer shut down.
Well, thank you.
Will there be a point of contact for customer service? Will it just be the Town Manager's Office that people will be directed to call if they, they receive forms? Because I'm sure Laurie, you'll become an expert in national grid bills and graphs when people see.
Didn't we use your bill when we put it up at town meeting?
Yep.
We already know a lot.
It was paid in full.
It was paid, it was paid full?
It was paid in full.
Paid in full. So one other thing that I did have on the screen before then, on November 8th, staff and Congressman Moulton's office will be at Town Hall from 3:00 to 6:00 this November, this Thursday, really to, to help with any unresolved issues or questions that residents may have, or feedback relative to the Columbia Gas incident. So if people want to provide some thoughts and feedback to the Congressman, it won't be the Congressman himself, but his staff, they are having off hours here between 3:00 and 6:00 on Thursday at the first floor conference room. I also under that had two questions for Ask the Manager, even though we've now deleted that from the, from the agenda, because there were so few of them. One was, will we be requesting that Columbia Gas, I'll translate hot talk into repave, repaving the roads in the impacted area? What I've said to the Board of Selectmen and others is that we're in the process of preparing a cost estimate to do full repaving, however we define that, whether it's, you know, curb-to-curb, whether it's mill and overlay or full-depth reconstruction, we'll be providing, preparing a estimate for the cost to do that on the 13 miles, and as a function of that, be forwarding that bill to Columbia Gas as part of a claims process. So the Board, as soon as we have that, will pass along to the Board, so you understand what the cost of that is. We have no guarantees at this point of, you know, what that means, but we'll be doing that moving forward. So as soon as we have an ask, we'll do that. The second question was a question about how come the tax rate, the new tax rate does not appear on the second quarter bill? And that's because it's an estimated bill. So the first and second quarters in any particular fiscal year are based upon the previous fiscal year. They commonly don't include the tax rate itself, because it's really an estimated bill, and then you folks will help set the tax rate in December, and the third and fourth quarter bills will include the tax rate. So that's pretty common practice. Any question about those items? Okay, I'm going to try to open this briefing, which failed me as we were sitting here. If not, I'll just peel through it without it being on the screen. So to give you a brief update of where we stand on the Columbia Gas disaster and the response, as of today's briefing, we certainly do the typical 10-day lookout on, on weather as we get near the tail end of the next 10 days, we're averaging about 43 at night and 32, excuse me, 43 during the day and 32 at night, so it's getting colder, certainly aware of that. As your Board is aware, we changed the process from this complete replacement process to this relight process, hopefully to be completed substantially by November 19th, but no later than December 16th, and then a process of beginning in the spring, probably between April and September, of replacing all boilers which had not been replaced this fall as part of getting everybody relit. So it's a two-phase process, this rolled out last week, seems to be tracking reasonably well to the expectations of the number of plumbers. Megan and I attended a meeting today, talking about plumbers, plumbers, and more plumbers. They seem to be getting close to a number which will seem to approach close to 1,000 plumbers over the next seven to 10 days. That number has historically been somewhere, it's really varied, 200s have not been uncommon, high 100s in the weekends spiking to 400, 500, actually closer to 400. Now they'll have a regular set of plumbers which gets close to 1,000, beginning as early as November 19th, excuse me, November 9th, we're already seeing increased number of plumbers. So the amount of folks being re-lit, the amount of boilers that can be replaced with those plumbers in place will increase dramatically.
Who vets all those plumbers? Does Columbia Gas vetting them all?
Yeah, there is a vetting process which includes the State Inspection Services Office, so these folks come in, their licenses have to be checked, there has to be a background check, they have to make sure that they understand, a fair amount of them are in-state folks, but some of them are out-of-state folks, what's the comparison to the licensing requirements? And so what we learned today is folks may have been, been on a contract as far away as two weeks ago, and have spent that time going through a vetting process, so that before they hit the street, people are comfortable that they know what they need to know, and have gone through a background check and like. So that's what's taking, I think under contract, they probably have all of that, close to 1,000 plumbers, but they haven't all hit the street, because that takes a period of time to get up and going. There are four companies overseeing those contractors. I think one thing that's been amazing to me through this whole process is the amount of contractors and subcontractors. This isn't the three towns, national grid, and the governor's office. This is a couple dozen plus subcontractors of various types, there's multiple subcontractors involved in the housing and in the RV side, and the plumbing side, the construction side. There are dozens upon dozens of contracts and subcontracts, the management of which is complicated. And at times, quite frankly, it's been where the process has, has suffered. I would say the process has most suffered through the claims process. Sometimes we'll get one, two, or three claims reps, as they add more people, they hand your claim to someone else, it can be challenging, that person may not know your claim. Like any other process, this is all about people, not just the people impacted, but the people doing the work. And some days you get the claims adjusted, that maybe you had a rough day, or isn't as up to speed or as compassionate as the next person. So we see the most weakness in the claim side, but certainly in other areas, it's about people. And if you get good contractors and good people, we, we see more productivity. So that's increasing pretty dramatically to get to that point. As of yesterday's date, excuse me, today's date, the plan was to, to relight 105 houses. They actually were able to get 117 done. Today's, tomorrow's plan is 142. They're currently complete on average about 25% of the 7,300 relights, that's somebody that's gotten done. As you can see, the number of plumbers and so forth, they need to add to really get to where they want to. By 11:04, the total workforce, again, on plumbers, is expected to be somewhere in the 968 range. It's a lot of plumbers.
For the entire region?
In the five-square-mile radius, yeah.
Is that one of those, it's five-square?
It's about five-square miles, if we get, it's probably a little smaller than that, more frankly. So it's three communities, but it's really, it's about, you know, a tenth of the size of the communities in aggregate, it's really a very small area. So they're working toward getting, getting to that total. Of all houses that were identified of not having heat and hot water restored by November 19th, Columbia Gas committed to make a phone call to each one of those 3,048 households, making two calls if the answer was not, if they didn't get an answer on the first time, and then leaving a voicemail. Those calls were completed between October 31st and November 4th, they did complete all of those phone calls. I think 1,821 out of 3,048 answered the call, others were left voicemail messaged, they've completely done that, they obtained data about whether a person was self-mitigating, whether they had heat back already, were they looking for alternative housing, did they have an interest in winterization? They captured all those data, there are pretty elaborate scripts that they went through for each and every homeowner, it was helpful for them, I think, to get that information back. Interesting enough, of the 3,000, somewhere around 10% indicated they may have some interest in winterization. So it was a relatively small number. We've talked about winterization with them, we all recognize that winterization is a little bit of a last resort, just because it doesn't provide a meaningful benefit unless temperatures remain really well under the 20s for a per-tact period. At 32, your system doesn't freeze up in, at 32 degrees, it's, doesn't happen at 32 degrees. So they are prepared to do that, we've been in meetings about that. They've also started an alternative heating process that allows them to use a generator units, units similar to the one that's at the library, if you've seen that sort of large unit with a big duct that goes into the, it's been heating the library. They do offer smaller versions of that, to heat everything from a single home, which there are several installed around North Andover, and 10, 12, 15-unit buildings, they put these generators, they generate heat, they blow the heat into the building and allow those heat buildings to stay hot. They're implementing those individual approaches when the homeowner or group of homeowners look like they're exceeding the November 19th date. So they're focused on the people at the tail end of the December 16th path, and looking at additional mitigation efforts to address those if necessary. So things are working reasonably well. As of the last housing report, there are approximately, if I have the total here, there are five families in North Andover in apartments, there are 138 North Andover families in hotels, and there are 32 North Andover families in RVs. So there are close to 160 families still out of their homes, finding alternative ways to survive while they don't have heat. And obviously, we're seeing an increasing number, these numbers are actually higher in the past weeks, we're seeing an increasing number of folks have their problem, particular heat problem resolved, and returning home, that's obviously the goal. And we're seeing a little, a few more, a little more of that every day.
So we had a specific email that went out saying, if you wanted a trailer and you didn't have one, to email Laurie.
Yes.
Did we have some, what was the reaction from that? Do we have any additional interest in trailers?
We didn't have any additional response.
So have we moved the additional ones in, or we haven't moved?
We have not moved the additional ones in. So that was, as we're basing a decision on, so as you can imagine, if you have 60 trailers, you're not necessarily operating 60 trailers, you need so many spears, so many sort of in-play, turnover and those related things. We were contemplating whether or not we'd expand that to 80, which was the first sort of thought about how many we would have there. But before we added 20 new trailers to the, to the site, impacted the neighborhood and related things, we wanted to make sure that there's a real need for those additional 20 trailers. You may see that a large number of trailers are currently stored up at the airport site, that's the sort of next wave to deal with what happens next, if we needed more, the next sort of round that was coming up from down south. We have not moved any of those trailers into the Grogan site, I wouldn't expect that we would. My guess is as we get closer to the 19th date and beyond, we'll see actually the number of occupied trailers in North Andover start to decline. So these housing stats, I'd expect you'll see that will begin to decline incrementally, especially as they're adding close to 1,000 plumbers and we're relighting more and more folks. You'll see less of that, gentlemen.
Do we have any North Andover residents and trailers not in North Andover?
Yeah, I don't have information, I think the answer is no, because we did, early on, we, we had some folks who had an interest to move into North Andover trailers before our trailers had come up and were operating, and we were successful in being able to move them. So I think the, the answer is no, we don't pull that out of these particular statistics. We don't pull that out of these particular statistics. But it should be noted, in total, there are 2,064 families currently in alternative housing throughout the region. Obviously, a big number of that is the Lawrence number, but 2,064 families are still out of their homes in some form of apartment, hotel, or trailer. They opened a third trailer location in Lawrence recently and been adding trailers to that site to accommodate that need. The shelter is seeing only minimal interest. We have 1,000-bed shelter set up on the Methuen-Lawrence line. There are about 100-plus people registered on that trail, on that site, and not a tremendous amount of people working on those.
So, and some of the families that are currently in hotels, since we don't have the trailers fully occupied, are they being offered availability for the trailers? Or the trailers, I know they were, you know, they were considered to be for families, but if there's still, if there's people that are living in hotels far away, why can't those trailers be repurposed for those if they're not going to be used?
They could, I mean, I think that those are communications that as we're become aware, and we have not been hearing that, that folks in hotels may be comfortable with the hotel setting now. So as we've been made aware of specific circumstances, we've addressed those circumstances and assisted in getting folks to a different kind of housing. Other staff, they didn't, one of the sheets on this actually drives down at the how many hotel rooms are being occupied more than 30 miles. That number was very high initially. They've really driven that number down. There's a lot of available rooms over 30 miles, but most residents are now staying in that 10-to-20-mile range, which is a much more comfortable range to get around in life. And so we're seeing folks being located closer from a hotel perspective, which I think is limiting the amount of people that may be interested in a trailer. Some people like the hotels.
I've talked to a few people who have said exactly that, like, you can move into a trailer, they're like, no, I'm set, I don't want to move, I don't want to move.
It works for the moment.
Yeah, that's good.
I think what we learned...
It's not good, but it's...
It's functioning.
So just before we leave the Grogans Field, I've communicated to a few people, but to make the point to the public, we are going to hold Columbia Gas responsible for repairing Grogans Field to its original state.
Really lush grass.
They will not leave a big muddy mess.
I've already requested a, an estimate for restoring Grogans Field, including the fence, the sprinkler system of its damage, and the turf.
Great.
Yes, and that'll be submitted as well. Yep. We have formally filed a claim with Columbia Gas, which basically, what's a specific claim with a long narrative, what other things we expect would be forthcoming? And there's a lot more forthcoming than we've currently submitted, obviously.
Right.
Yep. As it relates to claims, just to give you some general, excuse me, business, there were 685 commercial businesses, pretty broadly defined to mean, also some, things like Saint Mikes would be listed on the commercial side as an example. 685 non-residential dwellings that were impacted by the event. 155 of those were in North Andover. Should be noted that we encouraged them to create an alternative business model. They didn't feel like the traditional claims process for the residents was fitting very well within the business world. They think differently, they act differently. We were successful in doing that. They have this parallel track just for businesses, staff specifically for businesses, that's worked really well. All of those businesses received specific calls and were assigned specific sort of project managers for their own individual business. All 155 North Andover businesses have been contacted to date. The house-ready piece of those businesses on our community is 108, which is probably the highest of all three communities by percentage. And nearly, and that represents 70%, have seen service restored. So 70% of our community has seen service restored on the business side of the community, which is great. I know that that's been a real challenge in the other communities. They had more businesses impacted, but as a percentage, they've also seen less restorations. So they do working, we feel like they're working really effectively here and getting the businesses up and going, and we expect to see continued progress in that regard. Just a general overview on claims, there has been a significant amount of claims filed by community that paid out in North Andover, about $9.7 million in claims to residents and businesses. They've received a total claims calls of 35,000 through their call center, believe it or not, significant amount of calls. And there's been approximately 3,300 claims filed in North Andover. Most of those would still be open in some form or another. So everything from needing new appliances and self-mitigating to, you know, early on when there might have been a loss of food because the refrigerator was down from electrical appliances. The claims process seems to be working reasonably well. Talk a little bit about self-mitigation. We're finding a significant amount of residents are self-mitigating. What does that mean? I bought my own appliances, I bought my own boiler, I'm doing it myself, I'm using a local contractor. That's working well here. Columbia Gas, and I think to a large extent our office, has encouraged that kind of approach. You know who the contractor is, you feel comfortable about it, you picked your appliance. Sometimes it can get challenging. It's just the comparative appliance, Columbia Gas says they're going to pay X, but instead they're paying Y. So we've certainly had some of those circumstances, but overall, we find that when folks self-mitigate, they feel a little better about the process. And a large number of folks in North Andover are self-mitigating, we think that's sort of a positive step. That's the update. We hope that by the next meeting, there'll be a significant additional number of people relit. We're hoping, I'm hoping that we get close to 60% of relights prior to the original November 19th date. That'll reduce these housing concerns, and I'll certainly hope we make great progress moving forward.
How about the wellness checks yesterday?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I know I had forgotten something. So it was fantastic. I think, one, there's no question that the residents appreciated. It gave us our own intel. You know, one of the things that's really been very, very difficult is there's so many reports and so much information sliced in so many different ways. We don't necessarily know what's, this isn't fair, but we always wish we knew more about what was happening in North Andover, right? And we look at all the different platforms and whether it's social media, whether it's, however we're getting the feedback, telephone calls, we don't quite know. Going door-to-door is a pretty good way to find out, as you folks know, when you're in our office.
For those of us who are permanently...
So more than 200 households were reached yesterday. We coordinated an effort to put together a list using the voter list and do a nice simple subtraction of whatever the date would be to be 70, figure out where those people were 70 or older, use that list, scrubbed it a little bit by comparing it to the folks who had previously been relit, forming three teams, firefighter, someone from the council aging, community services director, Deanna Cruz, creating three teams of two, splitting that list of 200 between the three teams, and going door-to-door. And they were able to get it all done in one day. I have some data on some sheets, I didn't break it down too dramatically. Very few of those have been relit, so it showed that the way we had compiled the data was good. I think 20 of the 200 actually have been relit. So really, you know, significant, 90% of the people we visited had not been relit. So our own internal process of trying to figure out who those people were was a good process. We were able to identify one or two cases where our visit, we believe, will have a significant positive impact. It was, getting to some of the details, one or two cases, possibly three, where there was real risk, and I hope that by our involvement, we're able to avoid or reduce the risk for the people that were impacted. You know, here's what we learned. People don't like to leave their house. You just don't like to leave. You know, I'm offering you a hotel room, I don't want to leave. I'm offering you an RV, I don't want to leave. And so we find some folks stay, and that single heater that they think is going to help them somehow, they hang on, they deal with it. So it was successful in the sense that we reached somewhere in the tune of 185 people who still were without heat. They're happy to see someone, they got additional information, and in a couple of cases, we were able to identify people who were really at risk and apply the correct resources to those people to reduce that risk.
Did we find that a chunk of these people are perhaps a significant chunk, had to get applied for the relief fund?
Yeah, we had, we captured some relief fund data on it. I don't know what we actually found, I haven't pored through the actual spreadsheet on the relief fund side. Do we see, I don't know what that's...
I was confused about what it was.
Yeah.
I don't think they were comfortable. We tried to have them apply while they were there. It's such an easy application, but they certainly didn't, or little things, or little tiers. They didn't bother.
So today was the deadline?
They're just a little, I don't know, I think it's just not understanding that it's...
Yep.
Do we know how many North Andover residents ended up letting the deadline pass without taking advantage of that fund?
Well, the number, the combined number was a little under 450 for Andover, North Andover, which we thought were about 300 of that.
370.
370 of that, 370 of the 15. We think close to 2,000 households that could have had a shot did not apply, and we communicated probably more, not a criticism of the other communities, but more than the other two communities. So we communicated, and we communicated, and we communicated. We'll continue to do so because we expect that there's going to be round two coming from that fund. They've been able to raise close to $2 million additional dollars before the addition of the $10 million that came in from Columbia Gas, and I'd expect that'll continue for some time. So they're planning this week to discuss and roll out sort of phase two, round two, for anybody who still doesn't have heat. So we'll continue to try to find ways to communicate that. And I think we've done that on a number of different platforms. We sent out at least one robocall on top of everything else. There's some confusion about whether renters would be entitled to it, they are. We continue to encourage people, it's a simple form, and it's, you know...
They were, right, the deadline, we don't, do we know that they will in fact reopen it up for a phase two? Is that a definite, or is that something you think?
Yeah, there'll be a phase two.
But you can't get the money if you didn't apply phase one?
Yeah, and I think we'd work with them on that if we found some people...
You cannot get the money if you do not apply to phase one?
I don't want to close it. I think what they were trying to do for ease was take their list and put it back out again and make it easier. But certainly if we found someone who was able, we're able to satisfy that. I'm not too worried about that. They've been very, very flexible about it. And we don't know what the final number is. We do know from conversations I had this weekend, there was a big push over the weekend for additional applications. So my guess is that 370 number dropped fairly dramatically through communication, but we would work with them to reopen the door for the next...
So it would be interesting to know, and maybe we captured that data, but of these 200 people, how they get communication, right? So we know that there's kind of a bias away from the technology as you move with age. I don't know if that was something that Dina was looking at or would look at, but it's an opportunity for us to sort of get a little insight into that. Because if these are folks of an age profile and a response type, you know, not engaged, didn't apply, that gives us some data to potentially look at, that somebody fits that profile. So how do we communicate with them in the future?
Yeah, I think it's a great question. I think it's part of the reason we're communicating on multiple different platforms, whether it's the robocall, which we know we generally use, email not as much, social media, a little less. But it's part of the reason why we made the decision to go door-to-door. Because we can't, as effective as we may believe we are in communicating, some people just communicate because you knock on the door. And so we have pushed, and Columbia Gas now sends out a weekly newsletter, beginning last week, second one's going out this week. And that newsletter gets mailed to every house, so they're actually getting mail. We do, most people, I can't stand mail, but most people like mail. There are door knockers being placed on doors if they're within the 72-hour call list. So there's more personal touch to communication than there was at the beginning of the process. If you get a newsletter every week in your mail, it tells you what the update is, what the status is, and those kind of things. There's more personal touch, and I think it was both the good timing and the appropriate course to go door-to-door with these particular folks. And it's now also given us an inventory of their response. So when different things come up, we'll know who we're dealing with, who are the people at risk, who says, I'm fine, and everything, you know, seems to be okay. So I think the resources are right, the folks, the outreach people from the senior center were the right people to put to the door, as were the firefighters, as was Deanna Cruz in getting out there from a community services perspective, but allowed the right group of people to make people feel comfortable to share information. So that was helpful. That's what I have.
Hey, quick question on an article that was in the Tribune this week about road repair, additional funding from the state for local road repairs. I was just curious, what's the, do you have any idea what the formula is? Because it seems like that we got a much lower allocation of that funding than like Andover. And Lawrence, I would expect Lawrence, but Andover, Methuen, why?
The difference would be mostly roadway miles. It's a pretty elaborate formula under chapter 90, but most of that, the difference, so Andover is a bigger community by roadway miles and by population. So the listed population, 2010 census puts Andover at about 4,000 more residents than we do. I think that number is closed. So between population and roadway miles, there's a series of different factors. Those would be two driving factors, and I'm not sure if EQV's in there, but if it is, that would also be a factor. So part of the reason is the difference. So I think if you did it as a percentage, it would look similar. But they already begin with a higher base because they have more roadway miles and a higher population.
Okay.
Yep.
And will that be in our next year budget?
Yeah, it's a really great, so it's not a budgeted item under chapter 90, we roll it into the CIP. What I've asked Jim to do is focus on that. So one of the questions is, is this going to be sustained at the higher number, or is it going to sit as a sort of a one-time? So we're trying to get some understanding of whether or not this is the new bar or a temporary bar. If it's a new bar, I would want to start working with this dollar amount, which was 162,000, plus some additional dollars, and use this to start the supplement or create the funding for the sidewalk connectivity grant.
Thank goodness we have the roadway plan, because that is just, would be just pathetically low.
That's true.
And that's what we did, we based it on chapter 90 for years.
Yep. And we've been, as the board knows, we've been going 400,000 to 500,000 above the chapter 90 number on streets now for seven years. So we've added $3.5 million to roadway improvements beyond the chapter 90 number, and we'll continue to do that for the future. We continue to do roads even now, and there's a couple more roads being done this week for those who have asked a long time. Peter Street is paved, it was a pretty hefty trip for a long time, but you can actually, you can let your foot off the brake and not bump your way down Peter Street and your way to Panera or the related stores. So that was one of my favorites.
Anything on the job posting log?
Not a lot happening yet.
No. We have...
Now with all these...
We have all these new faces. Wonderful. Okay, selectmen comments and updates? Anyone have anything?
Vote tomorrow.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Vote tomorrow.
I have something I was going to share. I don't know if any residents have reached out to you guys, but a resident reached out to me regarding a bill that would require sewer operators to notify the public when there's a combined sewer overflow. So I know, you guys know, we get the notification when the GLSD Santeri District has an overflow event, we get a notice of that, but that's not required by law, I guess, and they're trying to... Other communities, especially who rely on the Merrimack River for their water source, really want to see that passed. So whatever, there's a few residents have reached out to me about it, and I guess the MMA is opposing this bill. So I called the MMA to find out why they're opposing the bill, and I didn't really get much of an answer yet. They were going to look into it and call me back because they've had change of staff and what have you. So I just wanted to share with you guys that I'm seeking that information, and I will share it with you when I get it, so that if someone reaches out to you, you have...
It's somewhat disappointing that we have to have a bill. I mean, we do have members of the GLSD. Why don't they just tell them, no, that's just being a good community entity? We should just ask them, and they should just do it.
Well, they do it now, of course.
Well, right, they do, this is a statewide bill, obviously, so not all of the sewer operators do that. operators do that, the GLSD does it for us. Do they post that publicly? I don't know. I mean, they, they provide it to us and other public officials. Certainly, we can share the information, but in other communities, it's not, it's not happening. So I think the resident that reached out to me in particular is involved in the Merrimack Valley Water River, Merrimack River Association, so, you know, a broader group than North Andover, but, you know, I think that it seems very reasonable to require transparency and want transparency. So if anyone asks you to-
I'm shocked, if they just don't do it, that's just ridiculous.
Well, they do notify us, but they also notify the Board of Health and the Health Directors in every other community up and down the watershed. And so every community, every municipality has the ability. We could take that information every time, like, for instance, if we wanted to for North Andover, we get it, all of us are on the email list.
Yeah.
I mean, we as a board right now could say-
Make it public, make it public.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mailer. Send, send out a robocall every time, but, I mean, as we've seen, it, it happens.
Robocall.
I'm just saying, well, I know you're saying no robocall, but what does, what exactly does a notification then mean? I mean, I, I could see, I can see how it works both ways, because I think a lot of people hear that and they think that there's, I, I-
Can't drink the water?
Well, I think that there's a history, no matter, no matter what, every time it happens, and I think that there are a lot of people that think outside of North Andover that it is-
It's not a drinking water supply.
No, I know, I know, but start thinking of-
Well, I mean, just because I want to put everybody at ease.
I mean, respectfully, the Merrimack River is a drinking water supply, not south of the river, not downstream from the GLSD, but Lowell has one-
Yes.
-that has overflow, and there are cities after Lowell that do take from the Merrimack River for drinking.
Yeah, well, not a lot.
So that's why I understand what this, why it's a state law, but we do get notified, and all of the health departments do so, any municipality can take that information and distribute it how they-
And there's no reason they wouldn't. Once we get it, it's a public record, I mean, we can-
Or public. I think one of the, the only issue I have with how we receive it, and that really came off of, oh god, I can't remember which particular incident it was, it was sometime last year and this board made a comment-
The power outage in October.
I've forgotten about a power outage.
How can you forget?
Well, it's Utility Month. The, the 2017 power outage, which caused the pumping station to fail, we went all the way down the line on that, and that caused a big CSO. So I think the only thing I would say to the data we receive even, is that, what's the context?
Right.
CSOs happen all the time in the river. I'm not, and if you have ever, I'll try to circulate a DEP presentation that I was part of, where in essence, they show the history of CSOs, the fact that there's decline, and the fact that the DEP would tell you themselves that they're not going to be eliminated. And so what's the context of the CSO? What does it mean? How does it impact drinking water supply? And downstream all the way to the ocean, if you're Newbury Port, they don't like what happens on the beaches, right? So what's the context of the CSO information? What does it mean? Because the Merrimack is going to always receive CSOs, and if you notice, when you receive them, they're half, they're after heavy rains. Because the system itself is at a sufficient capacity to process all of the waste, but when you, when you dump all of the drain water from a three-inch rainstorm, the system could never be large enough to satisfy the zone.
So what, so it's, is that sort of like air quality, right? So you've got that sort of that green to red air quality thing. Isn't this in some way the same sort of thing, in sense of, you're going to have normal haze or whatever, you're going to have more typical CSOs, and then there are going to be some that are extraordinary event? And helping people understand where that spectrum is? And I, as I said, I would kind of look at the air quality sort of index as maybe a way to help people gauge where that, that is.
Yep.